Let's see, why don't we get started here so we can get through some of this stuff. Mr. Walsh is on the way. I talked to him within the last thirty minutes, so I expect he's not more than a moment or two delayed, but we'll get things started nonetheless, if I can call the meeting to order and ask to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up, minutes to consider and act upon, the minutes of, all right, January 4th. Do you want a minute?
No.
Can I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Can I have a second? Okay, I'll second. Any discussion on the minutes of January 4th? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor of accepting the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, special meeting on January 5th to consider and act upon the minutes of special meeting of January 5th, 2012, may I have a motion to accept?
I'll move for discussion purposes.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yes, I would like to amend just others present, a couple of library board members to Kristen Tierney and Elizabeth Dillaboe, who are the two others who are present.
All right, I'll second that amendment. Any discussion on the amendment?
No.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other discussion?
No.
All right, are we ready to vote on the minutes as amended?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, to consider and act upon the minutes of special meeting, January 11th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tax collector refunds, it was requested that we table that later in the meeting after we've had a chance to review those, so with, if it sounds reasonable, I would make a motion that we move that to after the Director of Public Works presentation. Discussion being that in case there were any edits that we need to make or any reason we could kind of address that more fully, I think Selectman McCarthy-Vey brought that up in her comment.
And I think it's a good idea, can add some clarification in case there's one possibly that we might need to get more information on.
And then Jen, if you could, for future agendas, please move that to right before, to here, consider and act upon any communications, so we get it at the end of the agenda, and we don't have to make that motion again, so we'll come back into it at that point. Any discussion from the public on that, any comments from the public? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So next up are banner requests, first one up, to here, consider and act upon the following request to hang a banner at Sherman Green, let's take these one at a time if that's okay, can I have a motion for the Chowdefest?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, discussion, and I know there's somebody here to comment, do we want to start with questions, or we want to have some introductory comments from the group?
Might as well get some introductory comments.
Okay with that?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Jones, does anybody else beside you, or are you here to speak on behalf of the group?
The Chowdefest, the Chowdefest head and chief of, yeah.
Good afternoon, everybody.
How are you?
Good, good. I realize that this is a little bit out of the usual bounds of your requirements for your, for your new, actually, new requirements, I guess were adopted in November.
Mr. Jones, could you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, my name is Doug Jones, thirteen oh four Fairfield was wrote, and you had new guidelines for the banners adopted in, I guess, just last November. This is not strictly a Fairfield-based organization, it's, the Chowdefest is sponsored by the Unitarian Church in Westport. A huge number of Fairfielders are members, there are four, at least three Fairfield restaurants that will be participating, if, do I need to go into the format of how it works?
Whatever would help us make it viable.
Okay, okay, the basic format, and I'll try to give you the twenty-five cent tour, is that we will have about twenty restaurants, restaurants, actually, Newport as well, but mostly area restaurants, who will bring a traditional chowder and then a specialty chowder, or bisque, or something like that. Attendees will pay at the door, they get a spoon and a scorecard, and you go around, you can sample the chowders as many times as you want, and the attendees vote the winners in each category. It's six dollars for adults, two dollars for kids under two. Over the last three years, we've raised enough money for the Connecticut Food Bank to fund three thousand. We will probably do another twenty thousand this year. With the participating restaurants from Fairfield are Southport Brewing, which is a former winner, and the Old Post Tavern, and we're being joined this year for the first time by our friend Gary Zamola from Super Duper Weenie, so it's a good group of people. Fairfield's own celebrity chef, Michelle Nishon, has been a celebrity judge in the past, and we're looking to see him again this year. So all in all, it's a, it's a great event, and it's very worthwhile in terms of raising money for a charity I think that we all recognize is a valuable one, and crave your indulgence as far as our stepping a little bit outside your guidelines.
Any questions for the board?
My question would be, being newest member of the board and having just reviewed these policies, I'm wondering if you have had this situation, and since the new guidelines have been in place, I can't recall if that's occurred, and what kind of conversation there may have been about that.
I don't quite see the guidelines have occurred, though I think we spent a lot of time talking about, let me paraphrase, and then Jim, please pick it up from there. Sure. I think the, we talked a lot about the banners, the issues, do we support nonprofits, do we support business, our basic guideline for looking on what banners we should be posting or not, are those that help draw business to downtown Fairfield, that we're trying to, or Fairfield in general, are trying to promote area businesses, or organizations, or causes, and certainly, you know, that they should be event-driven, and I think you can go through the guidelines to get the better flavor, but I think the, we spent a lot of time talking about what was the purpose, should it only be nonprofits, were for-profit organizations okay under certain circumstances, and what kind of characteristics the event should have, kind of to help define the purpose of hanging banners in downtown Fairfield.
Yeah, no, I think you summarize it, and there was, there was a lot of discussion over a number of meetings about, about out-of-town events, and about, you know, whether we should be driving business away from Fairfield, and driving people away from our merchants and using it. I will say, I see an exception for this situation in my mind, because, number one, we have three Fairfield restaurants, and I consider that if they won this, that this would be kind of a driver of business to a restaurant in Fairfield. And I kind of like the competition, because it makes them all try harder.
Yeah.
And I also think that with getting a broader group of people to this event, that maybe some people will try one of their chowders, or other things that they supply, and then want to come into Fairfield to try that restaurant, so.
Actually, based on, based on the information we're able to derive from our ballots, about thirty percent of the attendees to Chowdefest come from Fairfield. Can we get about, what did we get, about fifteen hundred to the last one?
So, while I helped formulate a policy that specifically went against this, I see an exception in this area that I think I could feel comfortable with, and I would hope that more of our restaurants in Fairfield would, would make this a bigger event. Further, I think the charity's great, the number of meals, I mean, twenty thousand meals to, in this economy, to the Connecticut Food Bank, I think is nothing to sneeze about. And I would hope that more of our restaurants would maybe participate, and it's become even a bigger event, and that it would drive, hopefully drive businesses, some of these people who are not from Fairfield, who want to start coming to Fairfield to visit our great restaurants that have been expanding over the number of years, you know, in our downtown.
Can I, can I clarify one point that I made in the email I sent to the three of you, I had indicated that the non-perishables that we collect at the door go to Operation Hope, that is not true. They, in fact, they go to the, to the Connecticut Food Bank office location, which is over on Linwood Avenue, so just, so that we're clear on that.
Okay, thank you. Did you, A, was that explanation, clarification helpful, and do you have any questions for?
I don't have questions, comment, I actually, policies are important to communicate a direction, and I think the reason that you have people come before is because, you know, there may be times that it makes sense, and it also makes sense to me, given that so many Fairfield residents are involved, that it is, it is a nonprofit event, it is something that, exactly as you, Selectman Walsh said, does support businesses and could have a direct, not necessarily even indirect, impact on bringing businesses into our community, and customers into our businesses in the community, so, and, yes, it's absolutely essential that we help get people fed, literally, so I am in support of this.
Mr. Jones, is this the first time your group has asked for a banner here?
Yes.
Is this an annual event?
Yes.
Okay.
Will we be back next year? Yeah, if you say yes this year.
From purposes of the board's standpoint, is, we are technically voting on permission for this year, either pro or against. If we vote it down, certainly this, my next question doesn't make any sense, but if we approve it, are we approving it just for this year?
I would, I would say yes, because if we found that none of the Fairfield restaurants were involved with this anymore, I'd be less inclined to go forward with.
Or at least want to revisit it for that.
We definitely should talk about it.
Sure, sure.
Okay, any further discussion at this time?
No.
All right, any comments from the public? All right, back to the board, any further comments? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Jones, you have your banner.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right. You will come back to report the winner of the Chowdefest to this board.
Yeah, actually, if you go to Old Post Tavern, in the bar area, over the taps there, there's a white and blue helmet with black lettering, that's their trophy, it's a football theme.
We should go there.
You see those helmets around, those are people who have won, those are restaurants that have won the Chowdefest.
You're going to make us go to every Chowde place in town to check?
Yeah, why not? Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. All right, next up, to here, consider and act upon, a request to hang a banner at Sherman Green for the Fairfield Theater Company, can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second? All right, I'll second it. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the Fairfield Theater Company? You please come forth, Ms. Herman, and state your name and.
I'm Lou Hume, I'm one of the interim directors from Fairfield Theater Company, and just to give you a little background, we are asking to, for you guys to rethink the denial of our request to put up a banner in support of the Foreigner Concert at the Klein on Feb. 18th. We annually have always hung banners for our Klein events, we are Fairfield Theater Company right here on Sanford Street, but as you all know, we also do concerts at the Klein, we do about six to ten concerts, concerts at the Klein a year, and we put on about a hundred and seventy concerts here at Stage One. All of the proceeds from all of our concerts, whether it be at the Klein or at Stage One, go to Fairfield Theater Company right here in Fairfield, so all of the money benefits Fairfield Theater Company. This event is the band Foreigner, we hope that it sells out, we're not sold out yet, it's on Feb. 18. As Mike knows, as Selectman, first Selectman Tetra knows, that many people come to Fairfield to eat dinner before they go to an FTC event, and, you know, this concert will hold hopefully fourteen hundred people, we hope that a very large percentage of them will come to Fairfield and eat here before they go over to the Klein. Is there anything else I can tell you guys?
Okay, let's find out, any questions from the board?
Just, when the policy was changed, in the past, have you had banners that have come for the Klein?
Yes. Yes, about four a year.
Okay. And when the policy was changed, were you notified of that?
No. So the banner is prepared and ready to go, we've already spent money producing.
Okay.
Under our agreement, I don't know whether you know, Mike, I thought our agreement was with the Fairfield Theater Company, that we only make money, the town, on rent, on the sales of tickets at our theater, correct?
That's true.
Not at this, we get nothing from what happens at the Klein.
The town doesn't, no, but Fairfield Theater Company benefits, that's true.
Okay.
As a nonprofit organization.
Any questions or comments from the public? All right, back to the board, the Klein, in terms of the funds that you make at the Klein, is that an important source of income for your organization?
Very much so, about sixty to seventy percent of our year's income comes from the Klein shows, yes.
Okay, and you, how many shows a year do you do over at the Klein?
Between six and ten.
All right, how many shows a year do you do at the Fairfield Theater Company?
Between a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy.
Can I say a hundred and fifty, a hundred and?
Yeah, because the seating here is two hundred, we don't fill it all the time, it's a much smaller venue, and the Klein is fourteen hundred, and we try to sell out that, those shows.
Okay, so that's.
The Klein shows are very important to our survival.
When you say a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy, that's a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy evening performances, or is that afternoons, is that, I'm just trying to get a feel for it.
Mostly evening, mostly evening. This week, we happen to have a daytime theater production play with your food, but mostly evening, and this is an evening performance, obviously, it's a Saturday night.
Any further discussion?
Well, I'm, I'm not inclined to vote for this one, I think that it's, it hits more at the heart of what we had talked about when we were coming up with the policy over a three-month period of time, which was to have events here in Fairfield, and this is driving people out of Fairfield. And as the, I can't, I don't think, I can, I don't think you can, tell us how many people eat at a restaurant in Fairfield before they go to the Klein, and I understand for events that are in the downtown, that are at your location on Sanford Street, but I, I just can't get my hands around why we would do it for the Klein shows, especially, you know, I'm trying to drive business here, I'm trying to drive ticket sales here, and to benefit the town of Fairfield, so for that, for that reason, I can't, and I think it sets a bad precedent that other shows, that we would then be inclined to have other shows, that we would be advertising at the Klein, so for those reasons, I'm not going to support this.
Okay. Do you have any comments?
I'm torn about this, in part because of the issue of notification that I brought up before, and the fact that a banner had been produced, and I understand that it's a public meeting and a public process, but it also kind of raises the question for me that if we have any kind of way to contact other folks who have traditionally had banners and may or may not be now eligible, and may or may not be aware of the policy, but we're, there are differences between the exception that we just approved and this one, so I, I'm leaning towards not approving this as well, but like I said, a bit of a struggle with the fact that they've already gone through the process and we're unaware.
Yeah, as I'm looking at, definitely, I mean, this hits smack dab in the gray area, and I think that's one of the, this is issues, kind of one of the reasons it took us, I'm going to say all three months.
Yeah.
To come up with what should be a relatively simple eight-line kind of set of guidelines, or eight lists, list of eight guidelines on this. You know, one is that, you know, we did change the rules, you had been doing this previously, certainly that's one consideration, I think from a notice standpoint, it was written up in all the newspapers, and did get, at the time, I thought relatively good coverage, I don't know what we can do more than that in general, and I guess maybe it's, getting back to your comment, that this is an important piece of income for a nonprofit, that I think is a very important part of our downtown area, that I think has contributed a lot to our downtown, it, I know, and that was a real example, I was out for dinner one Saturday night, sitting at a local restaurant, and the couple next to us was in fact having dinner before heading to the Fairfield Theater Company, and they were from Reading, and they talked about coming down here, you know, often for, to participate in the theater company. Given some of the economic turbulence and struggles that the arts organizations, frankly, all over the state are undergoing at this point, one of the things that weighs heavy with me is that if this is a key financial component of their balance sheet, it's an organization that has spent ten years kind of building up this, and is an important part of our downtown revenue stream, I'm not sure there, I think that's an important consideration in my mind, in terms of providing support to the Fairfield Theater Company. In addition, Mr. Walsh, I agree with you, there's no way of knowing how many folks are eating here versus the Klein versus whatever, other than saying around the Klein is not exactly a dining hotspot, so that they may not have dinner at all.
I think Mayor Page would disagree with you.
Yeah, I'm sure he would for a host of reasons, but none have to do with the comparative quality of restaurants in Fairfield versus there.
I agree with you.
So it, in another circumstance, I would probably not be in favor of supporting this, because of the importance of this ongoing revenue stream, and I know the struggles that art centers all the way over, all over the state have been going through, not to mention Fairfield, we've seen Fairfield Arts Center, we've seen Fairfield University cut back, we've seen Sacred Heart cut back, we certainly have seen the struggles that the Community Theater has gone through, for all those reasons, I would probably, not only probably, I am in favor of supporting this to, I realize this is stepping over the line a bit in terms of what we try to do, and certainly crosses that line, but I think in this specific case, I would be in support of this, because I'd like to see the theater company continue to support and blossom in, in this economy, I think we want to do everything we can to help them do that. Any further discussion?
When you say this specific case, are you talking about this specific Foreigner show, or are you talking about other matters going forward?
I'm talking about the, supporting the Fairfield Theater Company at this time in this economy, I reserve the right to change that going forward if things should change, and I'm not trying to set a precedent.
Okay.
So I would expect the theater company to come back to us, and if you, I'm not arguing in favor of the guideline, and for another organization in, that has a different set of economics, as in a different time, I could easily see not supporting such a guideline, so I'm not trying to set a broader exceptional case, if that makes sense. I don't know how to define it better than that.
I think the organization, though, should know, if, if it's approved, we have another provision, that they will not be able to have another banner up in our town for another three months, just so you know that, there's, you can only have one up for three months, so you'd be, if, if approved, without going through another appeal, you would not be able to come back for three months.
That's the same as it was before, is it not? That's why we've only had.
No, it's actually different.
Oh, it is different?
It's actually different.
I think we basically had some unwritten guidelines, we've reduced those to writing, so that now it's an official guideline as opposed to an unofficial policy.
Well, it would benefit us tremendously to have the provisions.
Okay, any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right, two to one, all right, you have your banner.
Thank you.
All right, next up, first selectman appointment to the Employee Retirement Board, Michael Mears, is Mr. Mears here? All right, that's just notification to this board, it does go to the RTM for approval. Jen, could we make note to let Mr. Mears know, and let him know that we need him to show up, I believe the RTM would like at the subcommittee hearings, though I don't know if they're having subcommittee hearings this.
Not this month.
Okay, so it wouldn't go on until February anyway, because of when it's passing, okay.
No, I'm sure.
There will be subcommittee hearings in February, so if he could join, join the R T M.
I'd just like to state for the minutes, I, I think Mr. Mears is a great choice based on his background, and I think he'll be a great addition, and I'd like to thank the first elect for, for his consideration of him, and I presented his resume, and I think, I think he'll get his support based on his work on the RTM there, so I think he's going to be a great addition, and I hope they, they move forward with his appointment. Thank you.
You got anything to add?
I would love to, I, in working with Mr. Mears on the RTM, and his line of questioning when the pension report came before the RTM, he was excellent, and I think his resume, he speaks the language, it's, it's in another language, right, his resume, all of his financial experience will be a tremendous asset, and I'm thrilled that he's willing to serve.
Yeah, and I think that in my conversation with people, confirm, Mr. Walsh, and Ms. McCarthy-Vey had to say, that Mr. Mears' support was kind of broad-based across the political spectrum, and definitely has support for his skills and experience that he'll bring to the Pension Board.
Thank you.
All right, next up, to here, consider and act upon the following appointments, to the Fire Commission, Patrick McCabe of 1060 Merritt Street, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, is Mr. McCabe here? Great, do you, does the board have any questions for Mr. McCabe? Go ahead, Kristen?
Just thank you for being here, and just maybe you could give us a quick two seconds on your interest in serving and what you bring to the commission.
Absolutely, I'm a lawyer by trade, NYU Law School, class of ninety-nine, I had a failed run for the Board of Finance this past year, but I had a chance to meet a lot of folks and really speak with them and explain my interests. As I've told everybody, my driving interest is really in helping out the town in any way that I can. I think the Fire Commission has a lot of, a lot of the focus is on dispute resolution within the Fire Commission itself, there's a lot of interaction with the Fire Chief, policy, statutory interpretation, understanding really the way the town works with the Fire, the Fire Chief, the Fire Department, and all the various aspects, and for me to have an opportunity to help the town, which is really my overriding interest, I'm really interested in doing it, so I'm very honored and very pleased to be asked and appointed, and I look forward to, to serving the town.
Thank you.
Mr. McCabe, just in addition to your resume, do you have any, you know, I'm just asking off the cuff, do you have any, anything with life safety background or anything else like that?
I don't have life safety skills per se, but doing personal injury work, which is a part of what I do as, as a lawyer, it brings me into contact all the time with fire departments, police departments across the state, where you get involved with, learning about what was done at the scene, and, and, you know, learning a lot about, you know, how these departments, and, you know, how they operate really day-to-day, and how they, how they get out on the scene, how they deal with things, but I don't actually have any formal training in life-saving skills myself.
Great, thank you. Any comments from the public? Mr. Becker?
Thank you, David Becker, RTM District One, you know, I'm not, I do expect for his appointment to be passed, and this isn't anything for or against directly on his, but in general, one of the things that we've worked on, as you see with Mike Mears in the previous appointment, is moving. you see with Mike Mears in the previous appointment, is moving towards focusing on people when they go on boards. Oftentimes, they're more, they don't have experience or even the sectors that involve that. Now certainly for him as an attorney, he does have some components that will aid him there, I'm sure he'll do well on this. But I do think that moving forward, including fire and police commissions and some of the other boards, because this has happened before, oftentimes people end up on them and actually have to potentially end up leaving because they turn out either not to be a good fit, not to have the right experience, things like that. So I do think we should start trying to take a little bit more consideration there, potentially, you know, not necessarily former firefighters, but there's a variety of career paths that citizens in this town have that better interject with that. So I do think that putting, you know, putting an attorney on there will be helpful, he's certainly going to have a view and understanding of it, but it's something that should be considered, not just on this, but on some of the other boards. We're starting to do it, but, you know, I've noticed through some of the recent appointments that it's not entirely happening. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to bring that up.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Any other public comment? Ms. Barrett?
Commissioner Susan P. Barrett, Fire Commission. I just want to say I look forward to working with Mr. McCabe. I think he'll make, he'll be an excellent fit. We recently had a Mr. Anthony Janata, who was an attorney, who really, we had a nice balance, and we're, you know, we're one man down or one person down. So we look forward to this appointment. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Just to clarify, the objective of this board, at least me personally, and I believe the board at large, is to find the best balanced commissions, bringing together a wide range of experience. I think we've done an excellent job up until now, and I think we'll continue to do it in that space. Looking at the commission and looking at each commission as we come up with appointments, we're going to look at the mix of experience, background, and individuals to provide, on one part, the technical expertise that that commission might need, but also the balance that that commission might need, because every commission is in fact representing our town. And we want the best mix available to do that. So I think that having talked to Mr. McCabe, looking at both his legal background, but also his financial background, and make no bones about it, each commission we have is reviewing budgets and making financial decisions or recommendations on behalf of the various departments in the town, and we definitely need that. And we need that type of balance. I also think that from a demographic standpoint, the, I think Mr. McCabe brings a good mix of that along too. So both very supportive of the process we're using, and I think we are making sound, rational judgments and appointments in moving through on that, but also specifically in Mr. McCabe's point that he fits both those goals and the mix we need on the board. Any other discussion from the board?
Yeah, I'd just like to, I guess, echo some of your thoughts. I, I'm happy you're willing to serve, Mr. McCabe, I think you have an excellent background, and you will bring a legal side to this, which I think is important. Many of our boards, especially, and the chief can tell us, there's all sorts of legal issues that come up, just unlike every other board. So I think you will fill a balance, and I think you will fill a need. Commissioner Janata served for 10 years and was a great commissioner, and provided the board a legal background when things on the legal side needed to be addressed. And I think you will fill that void nicely. I was very impressed with you during your debates when you ran for the Board of Finance. So for those reasons, I think you'll be an excellent replacement, and, you know, I'm glad you're willing to serve. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll take this opportunity to say that since we're being recorded and to anyone here, we, I think all three of us have repeatedly said, and I know Selectman Walsh, when we were on the RTM together, that if there are those in the community who have skills and willingness to serve, to please come forward, contact the first selectman's office. I agree completely, and in fact, with the previous appointment, I have been on the record lobbying hard for people, for that, the employees and Police and Fire Retirement Board who have technical skills. At the same time, I sat at the same table when I was a member of the Finance Committee of the RTM and strongly questioned someone who currently sits on that board and, or commission board, and she did not have technical legal experience or technical financial experience, and yet I have learned that she has been a valuable asset to that committee in different skill sets. So I absolutely, I agree, I think Mr. McCabe will bring many technical skills, but probably more importantly, the ability to articulate clearly what the issues are, and to be able to communicate and work well with the other members of the commission will, in this case, be even more important. So please, if you know people who'd like to serve, have them come forward, because we couldn't agree more that we want the best mix and the most qualified people who are interested in really getting involved.
Thank you. I should also point out that we have extended the processes, as has been mentioned up here, and we had asked, Mr. McCabe, as we do other new appointees, to talk to both the commissioner of the, or chairman of the commission, talk to Mr. Janata, who recently left, as well as, I believe he took time to tour the firehouse and meet with the chief on top of that, to make sure that folks are well aware of what their responsibilities are, what their roles are, and have backgrounds, so they, and to be fair to the volunteers that are stepping up, that they know what they're getting into. I should also mention that the chair of the Fire Commission also spoke highly and very supportive of Mr. McCabe in this position. So unless there's any other comments, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Congratulations, Mr. McCabe, and thank you for stepping up.
Absolutely.
Thanks, congratulations. Do you know if Jim's going to be here?
He is not, he had to fly out this morning overseas.
Not an issue, just asking.
Yeah, 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 no, he's unfortunately not going to be here.
All right.
But I know Kristin had an opportunity to speak to him.
Okay. All right. Next up, to hear and consider act upon the following appointment, Mr. James Baldwin of 150 N. One Road to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second? All right, I'll second that. Any discussion from the board?
I have had an opportunity to speak with actually both Mr. Baldwin and the chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals about his appointment, and we talked at length. I think he brings a lot of tremendous experience, he's served the town well in a number of different positions. I did speak with him and ask him if he felt he had any conflict, and he did not, and he said in fact, if there were a situation that he would certainly recuse himself, as is the custom on that board and in, and all our boards and commissions. So he, I think, would be an excellent fit for the position. As we said, he certainly has big shoes to fill, but I think he'll do an excellent job. So I support his nomination.
All right. I guess in following on that, I just want to make note that, as is our custom, not our requirement, it is our requirement that in this case, because the vacancy was previously filled by a Republican, that we replace that person with another Republican. But it's also our custom to listen to the respective town committees. In this case, I have a letter here from the Republican Town Committee recommending Mr. Baldwin as their preferred replacement for this vacancy. Let's see.
And I'm recusing myself. I occasionally appear before that board, and to not have there be any appearance of impropriety, I'm not going to, I'm going to recuse myself from the entire discussion.
Okay. Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Any comments here? Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I don't believe Mr. Baldwin is here. I think you mentioned that he had a business trip that took him out of town.
He had to leave today.
Or will be shortly. We wish him safe travels, and this does need to, I don't know what the next step is on this. It's just here? All right. Then we're set. We'll make sure to congratulate Mr. Baldwin upon his return. Next up, item aid is a item from the Superintendent of Schools concerning the Meadow Street lease in connection with that lease. I'd like to make a motion to postpone to a date certain, being our next meeting, February 1st.
Oh, second?
All right. Any discussion? Any comments from the public on that? All right, I'll just add that I had talked to the superintendent the other day, he had described that they weren't far enough along in that process to have anything to bring back to us, and since it's only been two weeks, that's certainly what we kind of expected at this point. So unless there's any other discussion, are we ready to take a vote?
Yes.
Did he reveal, did they have, like, hired an agent, or?
They were, had talked to a couple brokers, they were in the process, they were looking at properties in Fairfield and I believe Blackrock at the time. Good news, bad news? There were a number of selections out there to be evaluated, so that it wasn't like, hey, there's two, we'll go look at those today and be done with it.
Yeah.
But the bad news is that obviously they're not done with that evaluation yet.
Sure.
So with that, if we're set?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, that item is postponed. Jen, if you could let the, yeah, be sure to let the superintendent know.
I will.
Next up, Streetscape Project. Next up, from the Director of Public Works, to hear, consider and act upon a request from the Director of Public Works, the town of Fairfield enter into a municipal energy opportunities agreement with UI, and furthermore, that the first selectman be authorized to execute the required documents in order to participate in the energy conservation program called Energy Opportunities. May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? I think we had some questions that needed answers. Is it okay to ask Mr. Bowman to, or Ms. Cannelli to address us on those?
I only probably have more info than I do.
Okay.
You hold.
Ms. Cannelli, if you would, approach the mic.
Well, we were here last time, Mr. Walsh had two specific questions, and I have worked on the answer to those two. The first one was to, as I recall, to get an indemnification from ABS, the installer of this project, that they would hold us harmless from any expense or loss of benefits which we might incur if they did not get the project done in a timely fashion. We have gotten that, and they've given us a signed copy, which is on my phone if you want to see it.
Excellent.
And the second item was, I'm sorry, now I'm forgetting. There was a second item.
Liability?
Beg pardon?
Liability for the less?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, that was the other question. And as it happens, my good fortune attorney Noel Newman is here today for another matter, I know. He was the attorney I spoke to about that, because I don't do sidewalk litigation, I thought it was best to talk to someone who did. And attorney Newman, I gave him the situation, you know, if the lights went off at 12, the decorative lights went off at 12 o'clock, and someone were to try to sue the town because there was now less light presumably on the street, what was the likelihood of their success in that case? He said that he thought it would be a weak case.
Okay.
As you know, we can't prevent people from suing us, but he did express the opinion that the case in that, the claim in that case would be a weak one. I don't know if you have any other questions you would wish to ask him, but if he has a, if he has a minute to come up here.
Yeah, Mr. Newman can come up, that'd be great.
May I, while he's coming up?
Eileen?
Would you be willing to email that document to me?
Yeah, I can do it. I probably can do it right now if your email address is on my phone.
Okay. Thank you.
I did get a call from Eileen about the, I guess the proposal is to shut off the decorative lighting at midnight, I guess that was seven days a week or every day?
Yes.
But I don't really believe that there's any obligation on the part of a town to have decorative lights up, and there don't appear to be. I mean, I've been downtown at night, and I think it's, you know, I love the fact that there's activity downtown in Fairfield, there aren't too many towns in the state that there are after dark, but I don't think there's a lot of activity after midnight. I assume that there are certain drinking establishments that are open, and I just, I just don't think that the town would really be held liable in those situations. Of course, you never know.
I guess, I guess my question, what I was getting at, and Noel, I know you didn't have the benefit of being here the last time.
Right.
Is that specifically, I believe it's, the concern would be on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, when the laws allow you to, the bars and some of the restaurants to remain open longer up till 2:00 in the morning. And here we are, turning lights off at 12, which is not what we do now. Right now, these lights stay on till dusk, dusk to dawn, excuse me, till dawn. Dusk to dawn. So now we're going to have a change. Now, I, Mr. Bowman, I saw earlier, he said he was going to show us some, some numbers, he did some calculations with lumens or something like that, or how much lighting difference there is. But having, having had done similar types of work representing the county of Westchester for many years, and, and, you know, the town of Eastchester, and on these sidewalk cases, plaintiffs attorneys are, as you know, very creative in their cases on trying to find ways on the reason their client fell. So my concern is, is that one of the reasons they may try to use is the fact that the amount of light wasn't, you know, enough to see a rise in the sidewalk edge or something like that. And I don't know whether you've seen, handled any cases like this yourself, or whether you've seen any case law come out, because I haven't done any investigation on it myself in Connecticut on, you know, you know, decreased lighting, you know, and then a municipality being held responsible for it.
Well, the, I mean, a city like Bridgeport, for example, has so many more miles of sidewalk that they have tons of these sidewalk lanes. We haven't had a tremendous amount of, so I'm not saying we haven't had any, and I've been, you know, handled some of the defense, Carly Kleishman has handled some of them. But I can't see where the town would have an obligation to keep decorative lights. I mean, I think somebody would have a weak case by saying, well, he used to have this, these lighting. I mean, the lighting really is for aesthetic purposes, isn't it? Basically, the decorative lighting.
Yeah, I just, one, it's decorative, and second, it's not, you know, kind of a public safety factor. I mean, theoretically, we could turn off all the lights and never put them on, from a financial standpoint.
Yeah, it's interesting, because the Connecticut, for example, for cars, the Connecticut Turnpike, as opposed to the Merritt Parkway, has lighting on it, and very often, you drive along at night, and there's miles where they're turned off now. I don't know, I mean, the state, there is such a thing as sovereign immunity, which doesn't necessarily apply to the town.
Well, in this case, though, we're talking, the differences between what I'll call, you know, sidewalk lighting and decorative lighting. We do have street lights up.
Right.
That provide the appropriate lighting to make sure that it's safe to walk. Decorative liking, much like Christmas lights, might be in addition to that.
Right.
But as a bare minimum, that meets, I would expect, every legal requirement that we have. If not, we'd be in trouble on a daily basis, and decorative lighting wouldn't be helpful.
I think there's no doubt but that you meet the legal requirements by having street lighting, and this is an extra that really the purpose wasn't, I mean, maybe it does add a little bit of safety, but that wasn't the prime purpose of decorative lighting.
And certainly over and above the baseline. Let's get the two other pieces of information. Mr. Barnhart, I believe you were checking how many establishments might be open after midnight that might be impacted by this.
Good afternoon, Mark.
Mark Barnhart, Director of Community Economy Development. Yes, following our last meeting, I was asked to, I guess, look into the number of business establishments that this potential change might affect. that this potential change might affect. And I guess there was some question, too, in terms of traffic, pedestrian traffic after midnight, vehicle traffic after midnight. I can safely say that I, having two small children at home, I can't personally attest to the amount of traffic after midnight downtown Fairfield. But I did suggest that we contact the police department, because that actually has such information. The midnight shift commander did indicate that the center of town after midnight is very slow. There's not a lot of pedestrian vehicular traffic. He even went on to say that he noticed that it's slower than it was a year or two ago. But the traffic downtown is even diminished. In terms of businesses, there's.
I apologize, Mark.
There's quite a few business establishments downtown, but very few are actually open after midnight. Usually, as Liz alluded to earlier, those are business establishments, you know, the bar, restaurant with a bar attached to it, where they have a lot of activity. Even those, I think, we looked around and surveyed, we determined about five or six such business establishments down. There's Archie Morris, Hope Lounge, Colony Grill, Inslee Molto, Molto St. Haven. Those are establishments that do have activity after midnight. They tend to be limited to Fridays and Saturdays. They're very much driven by clientele. There's, there's business, there's people in the establishment that might stay open a little bit beyond midnight or close early.
Do these lights go to all those establishments?
No, they do not. Most of the decorative lighting is post road, down Sanford Street, as far as Archie Morris. But, you know, for example, on Miller Street, we don't have decorative lights down at the end of Miller Street.
I was thinking.
Or even on Molto, the, actually, decorative lights stop before we get to Molto's. So for the most part, most businesses, most restaurants are out before, closed before midnight. There are a handful that are open on Fridays and Saturdays after midnight. All those typically are done or closed by 1:30 a.m. I think Molto indicated they might have last call 1:45. But again, the information they provided was, it's very much driven by the people in the place. If they don't have people in the place, then they're going to close earlier than that.
But since the lighting doesn't go that far, less on issue with Molto's.
Correct. And then just to get the rest of the issues on the table. Mr. Bowman, if you could come up and give us, illuminate us on the lumens.
Yes, it is very illuminating. It's really, it's the lack of illumination. When Yankee went up and surveyed the lights that are on, and then went where there's a bank of them off, and then went in Victoria's Secret, where we have installs the test LEDs. And the results are very similar, basically. I'll give you a copy of it. You know, there, where the lights were actually, were not working, the foot candles were one to three. Where they were working, it was from three to seven. Where the LEDs are, it's from three to nine. So there's really very little difference in.
Could you describe that unit of measure or scale so that?
Yeah, I mean, a foot candle, a living room average is 30. A full moon in a clear night is 2 to, .2 to .3. One foot candle is not very much lightable, two foot candles. This is probably 50 here. So it's very little. Now, I also then went and looked up, see if there are any standards for sidewalk lighting, whether it's decorative or not, and found that the Illuminating Engineering Society recommends a minimum of .9 foot candles for this kind of lighting. And I looked at it for where, it's in a commercial area and a major, a major highway, not a residential area. So .9 is their recommendation.
Now, that's for, for street lighting?
No, that's for sidewalk lighting.
Sidewalk lighting, not for?
For sidewalk, not for street lighting. So at .9, even without lights, we have more light than that. Dark skies, which is another outfit that's out there in the nonprofit, trying to make sure that the, whatever lighting it is on streets and buildings doesn't shine up into the sky, keeps the skyline down, they recommend two to five foot candles. Again, we're in that range. I looked at, I looked for some cities. Gainesville, Florida, I found, they call for 1.6 foot candles. John Relekted calls for .5 to .20 foot candles. And the most severe standard is the criminal prevention through environmental design rule, which calls for 1.6 to 3.4. So when you look at that, we're in that range, whether we have lights or not. Whether we have LEDs or no lights, or whether we have the existing lights, there's very, very little difference in that range. So we're pretty comfortable, I think, in recommending what we do.
Thank you. Any questions on the board?
Yes.
Sorry to take that over, I just wanted to get all the information out.
You want to go first?
No, go ahead.
Okay. You said one to three when there's just a street light. Is that what?
No, these are all just, the, there's not, the streetlights are not involved. This is just, this is the lumens on a sidewalk in a commercial area.
Okay.
From whatever source.
Okay. So what's the one to three that we have?
One to three, okay, one to three is the, the areas downtown where those lights are not working.
So we're still having that one to three? So we're getting one to three, but that's coming from the streetlights?
Coming from the streetlights, right.
Or the moon or store lights?
Or store lights.
And that's one to three foot candles?
Yes.
Okay.
Don't ask me to define a foot candle.
But then, when we have our decorative lights on, in those areas that had them, when you measured it, it doubles the, the amount of light to three to seven?
Exactly.
And then, in the LED areas, which are like the four, I think there's four of them up, right?
Yeah.
It goes from three to nine.
Right.
Which is higher.
Pretty similar, really.
Okay.
I have copies of it. I think we want to have a hard copy of this.
All right, any other questions on the board?
I have no more. Well, I mean.
We'll come back to you.
I do have, yeah, I do have a couple of questions more for Mr. Bowman while he's still, still, still there. The, you've not had any complaints about the ones in Victoria's Secrets, because I, after the meeting, you mentioned that the test ones, I never had seen them before. So I went down there to take a look at them. And I wouldn't say that they're exactly the same. They, they do give off a different light.
Yes, they do.
I mean, when you look up at it, you see the little miniature LEDs up there. And it's also a whiter light, as opposed to, I don't know what, how you describe the other light. It's like a beige or.
Yeah, more yellowish.
More yellowish or beige colored light.
It's the colorization.
But you've not had one person complain to you?
Or, or say it looked nice either, one way or the other. No one's.
Either way.
Which I think is what we really want.
Yeah, I, I actually like the fact that they give off a little bit more light, which they seem to, based on your testing.
Yes. And I think that that kind of light is also more of a glow than a shine, than a bright.
Mm-hmm.
So it covers an area more evenly.
Yeah.
That's the point.
That's all I have for Mr. Bowman.
All right. Any comments from the public? All right, back to this board.
Can I just ask Mr. Barnhart one more question?
Go ahead.
I'm done with Mr. Bowman. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. I got a little distracted with that phone when it was ringing, trying to turn it off. So I might have missed some of your conversation on this while I was trying to frantically find it. But you talked to the, to various merchants?
We had, we contacted eight, nine different establishments downtown.
Yes. And did anybody have a problem with the time change?
I didn't, I didn't speak to the owner. In most cases, I had a staff member survey to determine what their hours were in operation. I attempted to reach out to a few of the owners personally, and have not been able to do so as of this date. But I am planning to talk to a number about a number of issues, not the least of which is this.
Which is this, which, I mean, I guess the issue with now, with this one, is that we're about to either approve something or not approve it. So if we approve it, we're locked in. We're signing a contract and we're locked in. So whether they like it or not after this, we're locked in, pursuant to what Mr. Bowman told us the last time, based on a cost savings basis. These things would have to go off at 12 o'clock.
I think there's, there's generally support for the status quo. I think, as Mr. Bowman had indicated, not too many people have commented either way with regard to the LED lights that are at Victoria's Secret. I haven't heard anything from any of the businesses.
I think Mr. Walsh's comment is directed more to the hours of operation.
Hours of operation. Again, it's.
No, no, you're not over speaking. It's just, I, I kind of left you at the last meeting that you were going to talk to the owners, or we were directing that you talk to the owners, just to make sure that the merchants who are most affected by this, the ones that are open after 12 o'clock, have an issue so that all of a sudden they don't go off, and all of a sudden they're starting to call Mr. Tetra to make complaints. And apparently, that wasn't done, so.
I can't personally say that I've talked to people enough that I could answer that problem, answer that question fully.
Okay.
I can tell you which business establishments might potentially be affected, and the indication are, it's a fairly small number, as well as the fact that the police department has indicated there's minimal foot traffic, or pedestrian or vehicular traffic downtown on, after midnight throughout the week.
My concern is that we have, downtown's been, you know, has been revitalized. And I think it's a bustling place. I think it's great. But a lot of that revitalization has been done with a number of the eating establishments that have established, that have, that have come to town and want to be here, and are actually paying pretty high rents and making fairly good money doing it. So, but if these are decorative lights, it's kind of to decorate the town. And my concern was, not only from a legal side, about what happens if you turn off the lights, and people are still walking down there. But also, how do the merchants feel about an amenity? Because we were calling them decorative lights, so we're having an amenity for the downtown. And in the middle of while they're still open, lights go off.
Well, again, there's, the restaurants you're talking about.
Yeah.
Are closed, for the most part. The exception being those that have a drinking establishment or a bar associated with it. They're not serving. Most restaurants that we talk to, the restaurants conclude their service, you know, 10, 11 o'clock at night. They're not serving past that time. They're closed certainly before midnight, even on weekends. It's the, the bars that generally stay open longer.
Well, and many of the restaurant bars are not, the bars, the establishments that you're talking about that are open later are both.
They are both.
There's not one of those that you mentioned that does not operate as a restaurant, too, as well.
Correct. Yes.
So they're trying to keep their clientele there. Some of them have music, you know, various things.
Some do, right. 55 Degrees, for example, has music on Friday evenings.
Yeah.
But there's no light there either.
But there, if that's at the end of Miller Street.
Yeah, they're not, they're not.
How far, just to be clear, how far down Miller Street?
It's at the very end.
No lights on Miller Street?
No, there's no decorative lights on Miller Street.
So 55 Degrees isn't part of this discussion?
And Molto's is outside of the range as well.
Okay, how far down do the lights go on Sanford Street?
They go, they go down that far, but for whatever reason, there are none in front of that building. So they go down about the, the rip walk. Maybe one, a little bit further on the other side of the street, I can't even, I don't remember. But there's none in front of that at all, that building at all.
Sorry, Mr. Walsh, just wanted to. Did you have a motion coming out of?
Well, I, I guess the question is, is to Mr. Bowman's, is you're, you've been running the program. Well, I hate to put this off again. Putting this off two weeks, does that affect this program at all with UI or any of the other contractors that are, anybody who's going to be involved in this? I mean, because we've already, I know we had a special meeting a week ago, but we'd hoped to get all these questions answered by today. Putting it off another two weeks, does that throw anything off, or, or put us at risk in any area of this project?
I don't want to say yes or no, but, you know, they expected this program to start before January 1st, as you know. And I don't, I don't see what two weeks will make that much of a difference. I'm not going to answer for this one. I don't have.
I would like to put it off. I mean, I, I just think that we owe it to these merchants downtown to at least contact them and try to, and I'm not saying they have to be visited. And I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here. But I would like to have input. They're decorative lights, they're supposed to dress up the town. We have these merchants in town that are, you know, came to Fairfield for its look, for its clientele, and then they bring something to the town in economic development. And I, I thought we were kind of clear with what we, that they were going to be contacted, and, and maybe there was a miscommunication. But I would like the opportunity to be heard. And if it's not going to throw off what the process is, I'd just like to put it off two weeks. Though, I think I've got all my other questions answered, so I will not have to spend a lot of time. If you wanted to have a special meeting, you know, next Wednesday, I'd be willing to entertain that as well.
Is there a motion in that discussion?
I would like, well, before I make the motion.
Okay.
I would be willing to meet next week, Monday, next Wednesday. I'm not sure how, so I would like to hear, before I make the motion to postpone it, I'd like to get, hear your inputs on whether you, what would want to do a special meeting, just to, so we can knock this out and move forward.
Here, I'm, a couple of things. Back to the banner conversation. I'm really interested in, and I said this at our library meeting, we as a town, the more proactive we can be in terms of talking with people who are impacted by decisions that we will be making, I, I agree. However, I am leaning towards supporting this today, and here's why. I, I actually, and maybe this is a question. We're talking about if we are postponing, just theoretically, say we postpone, and we hear from three, five or six places serve after midnight, three of which we've identified are outside of the lighting area. So we have two to three, maybe four, just for argument's sake, merchants who are impacted. Not to say that it's not important that we speak with them, but what, what we're proposing, potentially, if we hear from them that this is important to them, that the lights stay on after midnight, is we're going to keep the lights on until two. I'm just throwing that out as a theoretical. I think that came up last time. Mr. Bowman threw you, threw you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Bowman. And how does that impact us? What was the, I can't recall what we had suggested. If we keep the lights on until two, how does that shift? If that ends up being.
Mr. Bowman, if you could come up to the podium, please. Just, the mic is up at the podium.
Well, it's a simple, a simple equation. There's three parts to the program. The loan, which is fixed, the hundred thousand. The grant, which is dependent upon kilowatt hours saved. And the local share. If we reduce the amount of kilowatt hours, then the local share goes up and the grant goes down.
Significant? I mean, there's two hours times 365 days times 109 lights times 35 watts. It's, I mean, it's, the cost itself isn't significant, but it does, it will reduce the, the grant by about $1,200 or $1,400, I think I recall, and increase our share by $1,200 or $1,400.
Is your representation of the total cost to keep these on until 2:00 in the morning is going to be $1,200?
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to draw the calculator. I figure you've got 109 lights, times two hours a day, times 365 days, times days a year, times 35 watts, whatever that turns out to be. I'm just guessing.
Yeah, and, yeah, I'm not a big fan of doing math on the fly.
No.
Just for a host of reasons, in terms of making sure everything's considered, so.
It's always wrong.
And second, if I can, if I can kind of continue, I'm kind of comfortable where we are. But from a process standpoint, if there are concerns about a lack of information, especially when it's something we requested and didn't quite get that information back, I would tend to support the process in terms of saying that, that we should get, have a chance to get that information back. To Kristen's point, you know, if one person says, you know, I don't like it, I'm not sure that would change our vote. But I think that also to Kristen's point, that it makes sense to get out and hear that. So from both perspectives, one, in terms of a member of this board that would like the, the complete information that we requested, as well as the idea of getting out and giving people a chance to give us some feedback, I think, for, for both those reasons, I would support postponing it. I'm neutral as to whether it's a week from now or two weeks from now. Mr. Bowman, unless you could give us some feedback?
This is, my friend's job on this one.
Well, I didn't, I didn't think it was fair to talk to staff or the manager of establishment. I thought it was appropriate to talk to the owner. I wanted to do so in person, as I had some other issues to talk to them about as well. I did have several appointments scheduled, which were canceled, not due to my reasoning. But I think within the next week, I can provide the information, at least for the three or four businesses that are most impacted by this.
Is it a week and a half? Are you sure?
I'm hoping it is. Are owners available now?
I was supposed to be meeting with folks today.
Okay.
So hopefully, within the week, I'll have that information.
Yeah, and potentially, in this case, because it's not, we are just looking for their feedback. If you get to their manager, their manager could ask them in terms of if there's an issue on that.
Yeah, again, there were, I was trying to do a couple of things at once, and it was really appropriate to talk to the owner as opposed to staff.
Your multitasking skills are be admired, Mr. Barnhart.
Well, fell short of the, the mark here, so.
Do you want to go first?
Well, is there any harm? And what's the difference between waiting one week or two?
I don't think there's anything much different. I don't really believe there will be any. I, I don't really believe there will be any negative. I just, I'm not going to answer 100%. That's all. I just don't do, I'm not going, we're just trying to, I'm not going to say anything to the UI unless they call and ask, but they know it's in the process.
So in that case, I would advocate for doing two weeks. That way, it gives Mr. Barnhart enough time to do that. It's not bringing everybody else out again for another meeting.
I would support two weeks, and I'd ask Mr. Bowman to do the calculation of what the net cost will be to keep them on till 2:00 in the morning. If the true cost is going to be $1,200 or $1,400, I would suggest to our board that we seriously consider that de minimis amount of money to, for savings, not only for the downtown merchants, but also the fact that since it does double the, the foot candle lights, one lawsuit, one, in five years, would blow through $1,200 or $1,400 real fast. So if, if that's the number, and that's why I want Mr. Bowman to do a real calculation.
Yeah, my caution would be that, that because it wasn't done, for lack of a better term, scientifically, where you measured the same sidewalk spot with the light on, with the LED light on, and with the lights off, there might be other lighting that impacts what those foot candle ranges were. So that would be the only, I can't prove that, but my caution would be that.
And I, and I see your point. I just, I, I just would think that that's not our issue then. We could at least say our lights were on. So, so if that, you know, what?
But to the, I could argue, we could do the same thing when they're off, but I think that, that right now is probably taking up more time than I want to discuss that on, but we can have that discussion, right?
Sure.
So is there, is there a motion?
I have to make a motion to delay this to a date certain, that being our next Board of Select meeting, which is the first Wednesday of February.
February 1st.
February 1st.
A second? A second. Any discussion on the motion? I would, if it sounds okay to the board, ask that we make a note in the minutes that we put this on first at the next agenda, so that Mr. Bowman, Ms. Cannelli, and Mr. Barnhart, who have waited patiently for the last two meetings, can get in and out of here quickly at that point, and that we do our best to come to a quick decision, though uninformed. Any other discussion?
No.
Any comments from the public on just the issue to postpone? All right. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Bowman, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
All right, next up, we had tabled the tax collector refunds. Can I have a motion to untable?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Tax collector refunds are now before us. Can I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's done. All right. Next, to hear, consider, and act upon any communications. I don't have any in front of me. To hear, consider, and act upon any other business that shall promptly come before this meeting.